This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivana Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Councilman Billingsley is absent today. Councilman Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present. Our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to come forward and lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you so much for today. We thank you for your help in allowing us to be here, part of a free society, and watching our government in action. God, as we look forward to this weekend and the celebration of the resurrection of your Son, Jesus Christ, God, I just pray as we gather in our own churches with our own friends and families that you'll just remind us of what this season is all about. This is not about us. We love you and thank you for your blessings on our great city, and just pray for the council today that you will anoint them with the wisdom and knowledge they need, making these very important decisions. Thank you for our guests who are here today. Bless them during this time in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting, work session, and City Council meeting held on March 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of March 20th through the 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts for the week.
Proclamations.
This first proclamation is for the James M. Berry Center. Whereas preventing child abuse depends upon community-oriented programs and services that involve a collaboration of professionals to prevent further victimization of children, and whereas child physical and sexual abuse continues to occur when community members are unaware of how to appropriately report child abuse and neglect, and whereas there is no racial, social, or economic class that is immune to child sexual abuse, and whereas child abuse not only directly harms children but also affects the entire family system, and whereas free specialized services are provided to the community, including forensic interviews, counseling, forensic evaluations, information and referrals, community awareness and education, as well as support and advocacy for victims of child abuse, and whereas the James M. Berry Center for Children plays a critical role in the lives of children who are victims of physical and sexual abuse or witness to a violent crime, and whereas the James M. Berry Center insists children in feeling comfortable by providing a safe, home-like environment for them to provide information about their abuse, and whereas the James M. Berry Center for Children works collaboratively with all law enforcement jurisdictions, the Department of Human Resources, and the District Attorney's Office to provide a multidisciplinary response to investigations and intervention of child physical and sexual abuse. Now therefore, Sherman Gotten is Mayor of the City of Gadsden on behalf of the Alabama Network of Children's Advocacy Centers does hereby proclaim April 13th through 17th as the James M. Berry Center for Children Week. And Patricia, if you would like to say a few words?
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Sure.
I'll let you hold it if you don't mind. Thank you, Shane. I appreciate that greatly, and appreciate the opportunity to be here to address the council today and our community. If you're not familiar with the Berry Center, we are the Children's Advocacy Center serving all of Etowah County. And what that ultimately means is that our mission is to provide services to children when there's any kind of allegation of child sexual abuse, severe physical abuse, or if a child's witnessed a violent crime. They come into our office, we're located over in East Gadsden, actually we rent a cute little house from the City of Gadsden, and they come into our office to be able to provide that place for them where they can feel comfortable and they can feel safe, and they can be given the opportunity to tell their story to one person as opposed to having to share their story with multiple people. We do work collaboratively with law enforcement jurisdictions, with the City of Gadsden Police Department, and we have two of our investigators here with us today, and I'm going to ask them to stand up. Wayne Hammonds and Mike Hooks that are with the City of Gadsden, and they've worked with us for a number of years and very proud of the work that they've done. And over here I have Valerie Moses, who's our forensic interviewer. We're a very small staff, but I think we do mighty work in the community. And if you've read any of the headlines over the last few weeks, in the last few months, you'll know that anytime a child is abused in this community, it affects all of us. It is something that's very near and dear to my heart that we make sure that we take every effort to protect our children. I've given all of you a packet of information with our annual report that shows that we've interviewed 205 children this last year, and what that means is they do get a specialized kind of service that is free to the community because we don't ever want income levels to be something that prevents a child from getting those services. The one thing that we know overall is that there is nothing that predetermines this child in particular is more susceptible. Sexual abuse, and as you see, 86% of our clients served have been allegations of sexual abuse, affects all families, all races, all income levels of family. And it's very important that we know as a community what we need to do to protect those children and how we can help them. You know, one of the things that's really important to me after a child does make a disclosure is that they are provided free counseling, and so that we can help them through that process of healing from their trauma. From there, we follow children on through the court process. I can tell you this week, you know, comes one of the final sentencing hearings for one of our alleged offenders, convicted offenders now, and we can be there and have been support to that child and that family, and that's the process that we work throughout with our families and the children that we serve. So I thank you to the council, to the City of Gadsden for your support, for the good work with your investigators here, Chief Crane, in the work that we do, and for your support of the Berry Center in all efforts that we have, whether that's through fundraisers or when we come to you through Community Development Block Grants, and we're requesting funds because ultimately every dollar goes into helping the children that we serve. And so, if you, you know, this information is here and provided to you, and it also shares with you more information about our overall mission, but it's important to me to be that place for children that they can come and they can feel safe and they can tell their story hopefully to one person and not have to share that with multiple people, and be available to them through the process. Abuse affects families across the board and in many different kinds of ways, and so it's important that we're there to support them through that. Y'all have any questions? Yes, sir.
I do. One thing that I think bears repeating, and you typically point it out each year, is that, you know, there's some who may believe that this is more of a city problem than it is for any other parts of the community. Can you speak to that to some degree?
Absolutely. And you'll see on our demographics here, certainly Gadsden is 35% of the children that we serve, and we know that. We collect all of that information where our children live and, you know, where we're serving. We serve the entire county. But at the same time, you'll see that our rural area is 29%. And so, what that means is that all of those areas that are, you know, past the city lines of South Side, past the city lines of Glenco, Hoax Bluff, I think, I spoke with the Hoax Bluff City Council one day, and I love what they said because, you know, you look at Hoax Bluff and you see 2% on here, and one of their council members said, "That doesn't matter to me because whether that's 2% in Hoax Bluff or not, all the children are our responsibility." And that's how I feel about it when we look at, you know, whether it's City of Gadsden children or anywhere across the county, that we're very, very fortunate to have a Children's Advocacy Center here with specially trained staff. I can tell you Valerie and I and four other members of our team from the Department of Human Resources and other law enforcement departments were able to go last week to our International Symposium on Child Abuse. Children's Advocacy Center started right here in the state of Alabama, and we're very grateful for that opportunity to have that magnitude of training with people that are highly trained in investigations to help share that information with us, so that we can turn around and provide better services ultimately. So, thank you for that. Are there any other questions?
No. I think another thing that needs to be, you know, there's one room over there that whoever's interviewing the child is in that room, and across the hall are the people from the city and the county or wherever the place is.
That are watching the interview.
Doing this means that the child does not have, like you said, the one person, but she doesn't have, she doesn't, or he doesn't have to go to court and do it in front of all of the jurors and all the people there. It's a very important thing. It's over there on...
East Chestnut.
On behind the City Ball House over there. And fix it the way it is now, and for them, and I'm hoping that the City Council will give you part of their discretionary funds.
I'm hoping for that, too.
And we're happy to have you here, and we're glad to have you in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Eccles, for pointing that out because you're absolutely correct. When a child comes into the Advocacy Center, they see one forensic interviewer. Typically, they're going to just see Valerie to talk with her, but sitting in the room across the hall is our law enforcement, Department of Human Resources, who are also a member of our team, sometimes folks from the District Attorney's Office. We've even had medical providers. So, they're watching that interview in real time. It's all recorded on DVD, and then that DVD is what we consider evidence when a child does make a disclosure. That becomes evidence, and that's what's submitted to the, you know, District Attorney's Office as they start to build a case. I think one of the things, just real quickly too, to say, is that, y'all see the little blue pinwheels up here, and coming up on April 14th at the courthouse here down on Broad Street, we will have a press conference at 10:30 on April 14th, and we invite all of you to come and have the opportunity to talk about what we can continue to do as a community. The more our community is aware of the needs for children here, and they understand how important that is, you know, the better those children will be served ultimately. And so, I invite all of you to come to our pinwheel ceremony as well. So, thank you to the City of Gadsden on behalf of the Berry Center and for your continued support of the work that we do, and I greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more. Ms. Hazel Oliver. Would you like to come up?
Because you're on camera. Make sure they can see you. You're on camera now.
Whereas Hazel Oliver has a great love for the City of Gadsden and its history, where she has lived most of her life, and has expressed this love by serving her community in many ways, and whereas the home and farm of Hazel's great-grandfather, William Christopher, adjoined the original survey of the City of Gadsden, and the family played a major role in its founding. Her grandfather was a Confederate Army veteran, and Hazel followed in her mother's footsteps as an active member of the Daughters of the Confederacy. She, we do have some here. We've got music club members. We've got the whole community here, absolutely. She has also worked with the Etowah Historical Society, serving as Secretary Treasurer for 35 years, and whereas Hazel Oliver's mother was raised in Gadsden but moved to Colorado as a young woman to live near her sister. Hazel was born there on August 11th, 1915, to Lawrence and Louise Christopher Pierce. When she was five years old, her mother moved the family back to Gadsden. And whereas Hazel attended the 11th Street School and graduated from Gadsden High School in 1932, she attended Gadsden Business College and the Alabama School of Trades and took numerous other courses. She married Clarence L. Wood Oliver in 1947, who died five years later. Hazel was employed as a bookkeeper at Ross Gramlin Furniture from 1938 to 1955 and worked at Life Insurance Company of Alabama from 1955 until her retirement. And whereas Hazel played the violin in her first concert with the Northeast Alabama Symphony Orchestra in 1954, she was first chair violin in the First Gadsden Symphony Orchestra and traveled to Birmingham to participate in many symphony performances. She's been a member of the Gadsden Music Club for many years. Whereas Hazel has had a great admiration for books and has volunteered at the library for many years, she was a charter member and treasurer of the Friends of the Library, which was organized in 1960. Hazel was credited with much of the organization's success and organized many activities, including visits from various authors. She participated in an oral history project a couple of years ago and still serves on the library's Board of Directors. Whereas Hazel is a longtime member of First United Methodist Church, served as treasurer of the Etowah County Fund for Indigent Children, and is still active in the United Methodist Women. And whereas in a few months, Hazel will be 100 years old and attributes her good health to staying active and involved in her community. Her advice to others to be interested in things other than yourself, to try to help your community, and to take part in things to help make a difference in the world. Now therefore, Sherman Gotten is Mayor of the City of Gadsden does hereby proclaim March 31st, 2015 as Hazel Oliver Day in the City of Gadsden, thanking her for her many, many hours of service and her extraordinary dedication to our city. So we have a plaque for you, and then we have the Chairman of the County Commission to give you another proclamation.
Splendid. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
You are welcome. Would you like?
Well, he's coming.
Okay. Let's let Commissioner Payne go.
Hi.
Hey, Larry.
How you doing? Well, this is a, this is a great day, and it's probably been long overdue. I guess when you get close to 100, everything's overdue, I think, sometimes. But this is from the governing body of Etowah County proclamation that's in honor of Hazel Oliver, and I think this would be redundant, continue these things. I'd love to say them again because there's so many good things that you've done. And so I'm going to talk about two things that he didn't mention, okay? So, this is basically some of the things that you've done, and what I have, two issues. One is First Methodist Church. Jim Martin and I were talking outside a few minutes ago. I think you came in 1949, First Methodist, and that's when my mother changed churches and went in 1949. But she's always been there. She's never, she's always been there. And correct me if I'm wrong, I think you were the first Lady Usher in the church. Is am I wrong on that? I believe she was.
Could've been. Could've been.
It's not that far back now, you know? But she's just been a dear friend. I can count her as a dear friend. And because of all the things that she does...
Not Larry.
You're not? Okay. All right. Okay. And the Etowah County Commission would like to recognize hail of all of her and all of her accomplishments and her belief that good health comes from staying active, being involved in community, and helping to make a difference in the world. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Etowah County Commission that Hazel Oliver is hereby commended on all that she has done to make a difference in her community and in Etowah County, and to express our appreciation for all she has done for others. This is signed on the 31st day of March night, 2015, and all the commissioners have signed it. It's been attested by our clerk.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Hazel.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you. I appreciate that so very much. I appreciate this...
It's not over yet.
This body of the City of Gadsden, and I appreciate my people coming out and supporting me. I really do. And I'm just overwhelmed.
You have another one, Hazel.
We're not through yet.
Oh, this. But anyway, thank you all of you for coming out and taking part with me today. I appreciate it. Appreciate all these people, too. I really do.
Hang on, we've got two more people to talk to.
Hey there.
To the Mayor's Assistant, to the City Councilman, Mr. Chairman, elected officials, public guests, and Commissioner Eccles, you do know she'll be 100 in August. That means she's older than you.
Just barely.
About that much.
We worked together for 40 years.
That's right.
This is a very, very unusual day. I had the honor of Ms. Oliver giving me an award, you remember, about 25 years ago for Daughters of the Confederacy as being their veteran of the year, as a Vietnam veteran. I have had the privilege to know this lady and the things she does. We're honoring her today very out of context the way we normally do things, inducting her into the Patriots Hall of Honor. Not because we don't think she will be around in November, she's going to be around and say goodbye to the biggest majority of us that are here with her. But being a special lady and being the special thing she did, we wanted to make sure that this was one that really got done against appropriate attention. There's a lot of individuals in here right now who've already previously been inducted in the Patriots Hall of Honor, but today's not your day. Today is Hazel Oliver's day. And understand this, the Patriot Hall of Honor has been going on for over 40 years. We have the park, we've got the museum, we've got the memorial, but it's not about the young men who go off to war, or the young girls who go off to war and come back with a chest full of medals. It's the individual that believes in what our founding fathers thought this country should be about. It's the principles of loving your fellow man and giving back. People have used that phrase, paying it forward. If you look at what Ms. Oliver's doing, she's paid forward for most of us in this room. She's probably paid forward for another 100 years. That's the reason we're doing what we're doing today, is to recognize a great lady, and she is a lady. With that, I will introduce to you the Chairman of the Gadsden et Al Patric Association, Mr. Terry Collier.
Good morning.
Good morning to you.
A lot has been said about you, and all of it is in the spirit of service to your community, service to your fellow person, and that is what the Patriot Association, the Hall of Honor is all about, and is humbling, and it's our privilege on the Board of the Patriot Association to induct you into the 2015 Patriots Hall of Honor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And upon the plaque, we also have another one. Would you like me to put it in there?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it so much. Thank you very much.
One more. As Ms. Oliver probably noticed, when this August body said the Pledge of Allegiance, first time in a long time, I've been in a group this large that said it right. Did you catch that, Hazel?
I did.
For one nation under God, not one nation under God. First time in years that I've been to a group this large that gave that pledge to that flag the right way. One other comment I noticed, a friend of mine sent it to me. He said, "Why in the world does our news media call a man who deserted his country and went to the enemy and caused six young men to lose their lives a hero? And the same news media calls a man who was a hero and took the lives of our enemy to save our people's lives a murderer?" Freedom of speech has gone wrong. But anyway, with that, it's my honor to give you this plaque, which it is just wood and it is just brass, but please understand, members of the Gadsden et Al Patric Association, we don't give these out to just anybody. You know that because you worked for about six years to get us to induct one individual.
That's right. Sure did. We worked this.
And I wouldn't say it was because you were stubborn and kept finding more doors because you believed in him.
That's right. Exactly.
So, you know that the individuals here, we have inducted Medal of Honor winners, we have inducted congressmen, we've inducted politicians, we have inducted unknown citizens of Etowah County that people had no idea what they did. But I honestly believe giving this to you today is the greatest honor I've had since I've been on this board for over 30 years.
Thank you. Thank you. Bless you all.
And I'm proud to have you as a member...
I appreciate that.
...of the Patriots Hall of Honor, and your name will be inscribed on the plaque that will be put in the museum, and we'll take this one and put it with the other 100 you've got. I love you, ladies.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I certainly appreciate that. I just love my town, my City of Gadsden, I really do. I've been here a long time, as they read the proclamation and everything, but I was just so pleasantly surprised to see my friends here from Anniston, from Oxford, from, we're all else. Yeah, from all around. I appreciate them coming and supporting us and to, for them to see what we're doing in the City of Gadsden. I appreciate that so much. I appreciate Ben Reed for coming to see me and talking to me and everything. But anyway, it's an honor, and I just can't quite accept it yet, but anyway, I shall. But I appreciate seeing each and every one of you today for being here. Thank you, and thank you so much. Take this with me.
It's that kind of thing that just warms your heart. It really does. It's, we do commend those who stepped up and chose to honor her. I think that's commendable, for sure. Unfinished business. We have an ordinance here amending City Code Section 118, 353B regarding wrecker rates. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. It raises the maximum fees charged by wrecker services participating in rotation calls for vehicle towing from $75 per hour to $100 per hour, for a larger wrecker from $160 per hour to $235 per hour, for larger wrecker calls between 5:00 PM and 7:00 AM the following day from $185 per hour to $300 per hour, and for a rollback wrecker from $10 to $25 extra. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1008 Avenue G in District 3, the State of Alabama, Stanley Jackson, Henrietta P. Jackson, First Franklin Financial, and Wells Fargo being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Builder Department. We started this case in November of last year. There's been no improvement...
in November of last year. There have been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Does anyone else wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion that we abate this nuisance.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Alabama, with Aldott. This is for resurfacing of Vandal Boulevard or Vandale Boulevard from Hickory Street to Forest Avenue, and the total estimated cost is $692,356.01. This is an MPO project with 80% federal funds in the amount of $553,884.01, and the city's 20% match in the amount of $138,471.20. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is long overdue in District 6. I'm just glad to say that we're finally getting this stretch of road paved in District 6.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 11 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Alabama Power Company. This is for utility relocation on Tuscaloosa Avenue over Black Creek for the Tuscaloosa Avenue Bridge replacement project. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
Item number 12 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Comcast. This is for utility relocation on Tuscaloosa Avenue over Black Creek for the Tuscaloosa Avenue Bridge replacement project. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 13 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Gadsden Water Works and Sewer Board. This is for utility relocation on Tuscaloosa Avenue over Black Creek for the Tuscaloosa Avenue Bridge replacement project. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? And as you may notice, these last three were all utility items related to the Tuscaloosa Avenue Bridge replacement project. Okay? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 14 is a resolution authorizing agreement with INT Wakeboarding. This is for use of the Riverwalk area for spectators during an event to be held June 27 through 28 of 2015, and does not require expenditure of funds. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business. Do we have any?
Okay. I'll do it, Mr. You got one. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. Ask for unanimous consent to bring this up today, a resolution authorizing agreement with the Yellow Pages for advertisement of Nakalulu Falls and Capgrounds for a monthly rate of $8.4 a month for the 2015-2016 year.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I've got one. Or you got some more?
Oh, yeah. Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob, and then I'll fill in that.
I'm asking unanimous consent to consider this today, a resolution authorizing a special event alcoholic beverage license for Forrest Hinton, an alumni of Gadsden High School, for a one-time special event to be held on Saturday, April 25, between 6:00 PM and 12:00 AM on Broad Street between 3rd and 4th Street. This is for everybody that graduated from Gadsden High School before they consolidated the schools is invited to this.
Second.
Got a second?
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Now I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? There's no more discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two. The first one I ask for unanimous consent for is a resolution authorizing change order number two for J&amp;D Enterprises on the 2014 street resurfacing project in the amount of $153,574.25.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. There's no discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one, ask for unanimous consent, please, is a resolution authorizing change order number one for the year 2015 roadside drainage ditch and city property herbicide application project. We're adding eight different places on here that we wanted to add to keep sprayed this year.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt, please.
Any discussion? Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. It's Resolution 100, authorizing a special work authorization between the city of Gadsden and the Alabama Department of Transportation in the amount of $57,588.77. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
We have one in opposition, so consent cannot be granted.
That's great. Okay. For those interested, it was for the signs at the 188 exchange on I-59. It was the big Nakalulu signs that the state of Alabama was going to put up at this cost, and I think the discrepancy of difference was that we're going to bring it up later and see if we can get that reduced. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Well, I have another one. It's Resolution 99. It's authorizing a contract for services between the city of Gadsden and the Humane Society Pet Rescue and Adoption Center. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
And move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I think, Mr. President, we pretty well hashed this out on a new contract that Shane's worked on diligently, and that's come down to a vote. I move to adopt.
Kenneth, you tell us what the... I think the monthly fee on this is $11,800 a month, difference in what we was paying back. It's been about 10 years. I'm going to vote for this today just because we don't have a place to keep our animals, and I'm going to vote for it today, and I'm going to look, I want the committee to look into this and see if we can't, see if it's not feasible for us to operate our own animal shelter here in the Sea of Gadsden. I just think that $11,800 is a little too much extra that we're having to pay here for what we're getting. That's just strictly my own opinion.
Mr. President, I'd like for Shane to tell the citizens about how many animal we house and also the other part of, yes, the other part of the drop-off of animals.
It appears that this cost covers two different sets of animals, approximately 1,200 to 1,400 annually, come from Animal Control, which is an arm of the Gadsden Police Department, with an additional 1,400, 1,600 coming from the citizens of Gadsden. This is part of the contract where we cover the cost. If any citizen of Gadsden has an animal that they can no longer take care of, if they can prove residency, they can drop this animal at the Humane Society for no charge. So instead of the 1,200 to 1,400 animals that we thought that we were paying for, they're really closer to 2,800, 3,000 animals. The other statistic that we did not talk about upstairs is the fact that, yes, you may have 3,000 animals, but you may be paying, those animals may be staying for seven to 10 days at times, depending on if there's a hold placed on the animal or not, and the hold is not always determined by Animal Control or the Humane Society. State law dictates how long some animals are held. And so you're actually talking more like 12,000 bed nights, if that makes any sense, because you have animals that stay for more than one night. Obviously, very few of them stay just one night. So it is a substantial undertaking. It really is. The cost has, it increased slightly back in mid-2000, say, '05, '06. I think it came to the point of the previous amount being $8,000. I think we got to that point with the new contract, which was agreed upon when the new facility was built. And so that's been five or six years ago that that was done, and there has not been an increase since then. So if we had been going up incrementally, this would not seem as large a jump as it actually is at this time. This is a one-year contract with the option to renew for two additional years at a maximum of 3% increase. It also contains a, what we call a 60-day out, and so if either party decides that they don't want to do business, they notify the other, and within 60 days, they part ways. So if the council does request that we look at other options, we are not tied to this for the full year, definitely not for the three years. So, any other question?
Shane, do you think it's feasible financially for us to build our own animal shelter here in the Sea of Gadsden, since we have animal control officers, and they could come in there and help with this also?
I don't think that you could perform the service with the same number of employees that you have now, and I don't think, at present, we know enough about the licensing and certifications that go along with such a facility. I also know how many buildings that the city already has and how many roofs and air conditioners that we maintain. And so I know that there are hidden costs in that that show up down the road. So, long story short, I hesitate to say that we could do it any cheaper than what we're paying right now.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Now, you said a 60-day out. What if they told us, told you, and the mayor, that we have 60 days to get our animals out? What is our plan? What is the city's plan?
Well, in those 60 days, we would certainly be looking at buildings that we do have. Obviously, you can't construct anything in 60 days, but we do have, 100 buildings are so scattered throughout the city. We would have to look at a temporary fix for that, but any building just won't do. There's got to be proper ventilation. There's requirements as far as washing out the cages. You have to capture and treat the runoff from the facility. So I don't think, I mean, we could come up with an alternate plan in 60 days. Obviously, we would have to. State law evidently requires it, but it would not be ideal, and I certainly don't know that you could service the public at the level that they're servicing now. But now, it's not a requirement that you service the public, but it seems like that if you don't or didn't, that you would have an inordinate number of strays in your neighborhood.
Okay. On the training, can we train somebody within those 60 days, the baby duck? Because we was talking about that upstairs, and you were saying that they have to be specially trained.
I can't speak to that.
Can't speak to that. Well, it seem like they have us over a barrel, just like the sheriff department with the jail. Everyone has us over a barrel. They could just charge us whatever they want to charge, and we have to go with it.
I disagree from a general perspective. This administration has shown themselves to be fiscally sound. You saw the audit from the last year, and we were, give or take, $2 million under budget. So we don't spend money when it's not necessary. So that's really all I, only way I know to answer that question.
I appreciate your answering that question, and I know that we all don't agree with how things are going as far as the Humane Society is concerned, but I'm of the opinion that, right now, we don't have a solution. This is our only solution. The other solution is to let all the animals out on the street, and I don't think that would be a very good idea. So this is the reason why I said that we should, you know, we should go with this and then look for other options.
My final comment, in the pursuit of other options, and the Humane Society is well aware that we talked to other entities, and I won't publicly name the individual, but they said that they went out on their own and regretted. So, for what that's worth, it obviously was not as, either as simple or as cost-effective as they thought it would be at the time. And they've been right where we were, so.
We'll do our research. Thank you.
That's right.
No more discussion. I move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution...
Let me ask for roll call on that, please.
Okay. Roll call vote. Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Worthy?
No.
Echols?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
I would like to thank the council. I think we made a wise decision here. History does repeat itself, and if we study it long enough, we can go back and see what our alternatives have been all along, and know that we've come out pretty good.
I like what Councilman Reed just said. History does repeat itself, and sometimes you get out of the business, animal control business. We was in it years ago, years and years and years ago. We had our own animal facility here in the Sea of Gadsden, and we did our own, and it's like you said, history does repeat itself, and I think we're probably going to end up back that way with our own, hopefully, one day.
Well, I've been here a long time. We finally built a state-of-the-art with the help of a lot of people, a state-of-the-art facility for that. For us to do... For us to do likewise, in my opinion, is not something that we can afford to do. We probably have the money, but it's not money well spent when the number of employees that we have to have and the salaries are a minor part of the total cost of an employee. The insurance, the retirement, it's just 70% of the money that we take in goes to the employees. And I know we've gone over this time and time again. I thought we finally, when we built the state-of-the-art place, that it was over, but it's not. But I don't think there's a chance that we can do it for any less money than what we're paying, and we don't have an option like Ms. Toles says. So I hope that this is going to be the end of it.
That's the key word. You said we built the state-of-the-art facility. So if we built it, why would we continue to pay more and more?
I said, with a lot of people's help, we only spent $125,000 on it. There was probably a million dollars spent on the total amount.
Once you build it, you do have to maintain it for operational purposes, you know.
I understand that.
People don't do things for free no more.
I understand that.
Anyway, could we move on? We beat that thing yet to death, you know? Really. I'm asking to move along, Mr. President.
All right. So we are to the point in the agenda for department reports, committees, boards. Do we have any today? Okay, citizens' requests, we have one. Carol Larkin, is she here? Come on up, Ms. Larkin, state your name and address.
I'm Carol Larkins. I'm the president of the Gadsden Music Club, and this year, 2015, is going to mark 100 years. No, Hazel was not here at the very beginning, but she is going to be here at the end. And I wanted to make a personal invitation to not only the mayor, but also all of you councilmen and women, to be invited to our 100th anniversary and reception that is going to be held on the 26th of April at the temple, which is called also the Music Center, right up here on Chestnut Street. We're going to have a reception, and it'd be with musics from some of our scholarship winners. We give out one to two scholarships every year to a student, and they go for two weeks, I think, to a school of their choice to learn and be immersed in music. And they, some of them have gone on to be composers and wonderful citizens. So if I may approach each one of you, I'll give you a personal invitation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Thank you.
And we have one that's absent. I'll be glad to.
Once again, thank you, all of you council members, for helping keep us music in our schools. The schools are our future. The children are our future. So thank you very much for your help.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Larkin. Thank you. One thing I will point out is 100 years is nothing to shake a stick at. We've celebrated, you know, someone who's close to living 100 years. I do want to point out that in 2011, my fraternity celebrated a 100-year anniversary, and I regret having missed that anniversary. But also, I will, you know, I will say that this is, it's very impressive that you've been committed to serving the community for that long, and we appreciate everything that you've done. And thank you for the personalized invitation. I do appreciate that.
You're more than welcome. Without your help, we would not possibly have music in our schools for our children. And if I may take just a few seconds, our last program was children, music in schools, in elementary school. So we had the Duck Springs Elementary School come, and under the direction of Dr. Daryl Harris. And those children were so excited and so enthusiastic, and they were so proud to be able to come and show us what they have learned. And Dr. Harris was so patient, and they were just so attentive. And I look out at them, and I know that our future, the music club, is in good hands. And thank you for your help again. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, remarks by the mayor and council?
Before that, I had one more. Kay Moore wanted me to speak a little bit about First Friday.
Okay.
She had laryngitis. She couldn't be here. So she just wanted me to reiterate about First Friday, and I got a brochure right here to read off of. Spring's in the air. Kay says to come down and shop for Easter, listen to live music, check out the classic cars, and dine at your favorite restaurant. But the main focus is to come out and have a good time. They're going to have entertainment at the Pittman Theater. It's going to be McPherson Struts. At Fifth and Broad is Die, Draw, Deidre, Deidre, Die, Deidre. And the Rough Pro Band. I'm sure we'll enjoy that. And then at Fourth and Broad, New Delusions, and Third and Broad, Cody Johnson. So they'll have entertainment up and down the line for it. One thing you can't do is no pets, no skateboards, no skates at First Friday. Just come down, enjoy yourself, and Barbara, I guess Riley can't go. So we'll just have to live with that, I reckon. Okay. Oh, and also, community development. Nick asked me to tell y'all, grass cutting in the City of Gadsden is a kind of a big thing. It's not contracted out. We do that ourselves. It's based on an upfront cost of $25 an hour. The first one cost, $25, administrative cost. Then it's $60 an hour after that, and from then on, cutting your grass. What, do we have 2,500 lots last year, some phenomenal figure? So, folks, if you don't want to cut your grass, we'll cut it for you and put it in Gadsden, which is really dumb in your part. But anyway, that's what it'll cost. One time cost $25, administrative cost, 60 bucks. $85 for the first hour, 60 from then on. And that's cheap, considering all the equipment, manpower, salaries, and benefits that we're putting out to get this job done. Anyway, that's all.
What would be interesting is to see how much of that we actually collect, because that is the strategy of many absentee landlord or what have you. They use that process to keep the property.
I think we wouldn't have a debt service if the State of Alabama would just pay us with their part.
Indeed.
We'd get it all paid off. We'd even.
Absolutely. And what he's referring to there, people, and many of you know that already, is that on our main thoroughfare, we have to maintain, those are actually state right of ways. But we have to maintain them essentially with no expectations of the state actually paying us back, because they don't. And we could pursue it legally all day long, but we, you know, there'd be really no hope that they're actually going to pay us. So the system is just, you know, it's very difficult, it's a difficult pill to swallow all the way around. All right, remarks by the mayor and council? Councilwoman Toles?
I'd just like to say Happy Easter to everyone.
Amen.
Councilman Worthy?
I just want to let everybody know about my community meeting will be Thursday at Carver at 5:30. And I've been asked to talk about First Saturday. First Saturday would be this first Saturday, April 4th, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Carver. And also, on the first Saturday in June, they're going to have a community cleanup. They're going to meet at Carver. If anybody would like to come down to help clean up the community to the neighborhood, they'll meet at Carver at 10:00 a.m. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you. Just want to wish everybody a Happy Easter this weekend. We're having a sunrise service at Alabama Sea and gazebo. It'll start at 7:30 this Sunday. If you have any places to go, come out and be with us at the Easter sunrise service. Also, too, we will be having, our Music on Megan this year will be starting the fourth Saturday of each month at the Alabama Sea and gazebo. The time will be announced a little bit later. We've got a bunch of groups lined up. We'll have free food and free drinks out there this year, as normal. So that's coming up pretty good. We've got everything worked out for it. And just ask that you'll be safe this weekend, and hope you spend the time with your families.
Councilman Reed?
Okay. Hazel, I wrote down all this stuff up here to say about you, but I'm not going to get to it. So I just want to let you know that I'm just privileged to be a friend of yours.
All right. I had a couple of points. Again, I do want to echo the sentiment about Easter. Happy Easter, and wishing everybody a safe Easter. You know, I'll point this out, and we all know it, but sometimes it begs pointing out that Easter's not about the Easter bunny and some of the other stuff that comes with it. It's about probably the most amazing sacrifice that's ever been made, and that's our Lord and Savior giving His life so that we all might be saved. So I appreciate those of us who keep that in mind as we celebrate the Easter holiday. Just a couple, if you've been around council meetings for as long as I've been in office, you know that I really kind of, I really like to speak to some educational points. One thing I'd like for people to bear in mind is that the President, President Obama has proposed a transportation plan in upwards of $478 billion that, you know, is a six-year plan. So we were in Washington not too long ago pitching our congressional representatives for a long-term transportation bill. So this is, in effect, a six-year plan, which speaks to something long-term. Please, please, stay in the ear and in the faces of your elected officials regarding securing a long-term transportation bill, because that's important. As it stands right now, these continuing resolutions only allow them to do maintenance on our roads and highways, which makes it very difficult to do any level of planning, which is why it's so difficult for us to secure funding for our 759 expansion project. So again, just bear that in mind. Stay on top of this issue. Understand it. Don't take my word for it. Understand it yourself. And again, effectively lobby your elected officials to drive this forward, because 759 is a big strategic project for us going forward. The only other piece of information that I'll share is on April, we won't meet again until April 14th. So on that day, I'll be proposing to this council a resolution, proposing a one-year moratorium on payday lending or payday loan types of businesses. It will be modeled in large degree after a resolution that currently exists, or moratoriums that currently exist in Pelham and Birmingham. You've heard me talk about this before in the past, and we patted the brakes back then because we wanted to make sure that we vetted this legally. And we have. We've looked at it to a large degree to determine whether or not there's anything we can, you know, anything that we need to be mindful of. As you all know, and I don't have to tell you, everybody in this room that drives our main thoroughfare knows that our main thoroughfare is peppered with clusters of these types of businesses. And they add really no meaningful value to our community, whether it be in the way of lending services, or whether it be in the way of revenues to the city. I personally feel that many of our state legislators have been slow to react on this issue, because a number of them have an ownership interest in these types of business. So it creates a very noticeable conflict. I'd really like to know, and I don't know how you would secure that type of information, but I'd like to know those of them in Montgomery who do have an ownership in these types of businesses. Don't even know that that's possible, but it's just something interesting to note. It's questionable, again, as to whether or not they can be objective, having those ownership interests. Our president, through his Consumer Protection Agency, has vowed to address the malicious impact that these businesses have on the poorest within our community. So our goal here is not to try to put anybody out of business. Our goal here is to, one, make sure that our beautiful landscape and our thoroughfares are not overrun by these types of businesses with the inappropriate signage that we've seen, and some of the other negative connotations that go with it. We have an obligation in all respects to try to present our city in the best possible light, and this is just one of those ways that we're trying to do that. So again, just stay tuned. There'll be more to come of that, but the plan is to address it in the next available council meeting. Shane?
I'm reminded, I don't think there's anybody here from Parks and Rec, but there is an Easter egg hunt, even though Easter's not about the bunny and the eggs. There is an Easter egg hunt at the softball, at the sports complex on Thursday, this Thursday, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. And I don't have any more details, so if you have questions, call Parks and Rec, 256-549-4680. Thank you.
I'll definitely be there. Are they going to furnish the eggs? They do. 469, I got it.
All right. If anybody's interested, there's a list that each of the council members have been provided. There's a list of approximately 16 of these types of businesses in the city. One of the more interesting ones is at the very top of the list. It's actually the Walmart Supercenter. There's actually a payday lending element with inside the Supercenter. I've yet to research that to any degree to be able to talk to it at an educated level, but it was just interesting to see that that was at the top of this list. So again, stay tuned there. Couple other announcements. Due to the Alabama League's Day at the Legislature program in Montgomery, the city council will not meet next Tuesday. Our regular meetings will resume on Tuesday, April 14th. And also, due to the Good Friday holiday, Thursday's garbage route will be collected on Wednesday, and Friday's route will be collected on Thursday. I was also asked to speak to the landfill. The landfill will be open Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and will be closed on Friday of this week. If we have nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.